This meeting of February 19th to order, and if you would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Fulkens?
Here.
And at this time, we would need a motion to approve the agenda for this evening? I don't think there's any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if you come forward, if you would state your first name, and then write your full name and your address for the clerk. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which this evening, we have the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting on February 5th.
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes.
Motion carries. And this evening, we have a public hearing to consider the approval of a resolution to adopt an ordinance amending Chapters 8 and 18 of the City of Cadillac Code. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I would like to introduce Anthony Wolf, our Fire Marshal, at this time. Anthony is going to provide us with a brief PowerPoint highlighting some of the more significant updates to the request that was introduced at your last meeting. Anthony, when you're ready, the floor is yours, and there's the mic.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So tonight, what we've got is a public hearing, and I've packaged everything together because it all essentially ties together neatly. However, there are separate moving parts to it. So I've got a brief, I've got a brief presentation, starting out with the International Property Maintenance Code, commonly referred to as the Rental Code, but it's not the Rental Code. We've never used it as just the Rental Code. It applies to all housing maintenance, all housing in the city, all buildings. So, moving forward, let's see. There we go. All right. So what we're proposing is a change from the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code to the 2015. We've been using the Property, International Property Maintenance Code, the IPMC, for many years, and we're just basically asking it to go from currently the 2012 up to the 15. Reason being, in April of 17, Michigan adopted the 2015 edition of the Michigan Building Code, the MBC. In short, the IPMC is a companion document to the Building Code. So they are designed to work together. So anytime the state updates their code, their building code, which we have no control over, we ask, we typically try to follow suit, so that way we don't have conflicts between the codes. This is something that we're asking to amend in, or proposing to amend in, is a change to Section 1 pertaining to condemned housing. This is something that we've designed locally to fit our own local issues with condemned housing. Essentially, what we're asking to do is a house gets condemned, for whatever reason, and the person then gets served notice, and then they have to repair the home. If they don't do anything with it within 30 days, we're going to ask that they register, or under this, require that they register, and then, boom, they are now under increased monitoring, just like anything else, and with registration comes a monthly fee, due to help defray the costs of the increased monitoring, as well as incentivize, push people forward to get these condemned places up and running. Because condemned housing, we've highlighted as a big issue for us, as a big concern for us. When I say "big issue," I don't want to say, "Oh, we've got all this condemned housing." But it is a very important issue. Condemned housing can have significant destabilizing effects on neighborhoods. So with that, that's where these, that's where this section comes in. So basically, it's, the only time a fee will be incurred is when the place is just sitting idle. There is no plan in place to repair it. They are not actively repairing it. They are just sitting idle with their property, not doing anything with it. So that's when the trigger for registration comes in. Under Section 3, there's a lot of moving parts to this section, but essentially, what we did is we looked down, in partnership with the Police Department and Code Enforcement, we said, "Hey, we're finding some redundancies in our city code, the rules and regulations we've designed, and the International Property Maintenance Code." So, working with Code Enforcement, we determined, you know what? It'd be best if we did away with these redundancies, packaged this all into one nice neat thing, and work under a single document. And that's where this comes in. So we said, "Hey, it's, we're finding better efficiency working out of the International Property Maintenance Code. Let's get rid of these redundancies, bolster the International Property Maintenance Code to be consistent with our existing city code, and go from there." And in theory, it should help streamline our Code Enforcement activities quite nicely. So in summary, we're asking to go from the 2012 to the 2015. We are going to be, we're proposing an increase in regulation of condemned housing. We're asking to utilize the rules of the International Property Maintenance Code for Code Enforcement. At the same time, we're going to eliminate redundancies between the city's code and the International Property Maintenance Code, and we're also asking to require carbon monoxide monitoring in sleeping areas of homes. So there is the, in a nutshell, breakdown of what's proposed with the IPMC. The next component here is the IFC, the International Fire Code. Similar trigger, just with the IPMC, Michigan adopts its new building code. We're asking to go up to keep, keep things consistent and prevent any conflicts. Today, we actually, after working with Councilmember King, a question came up, and is a very good question, is, are we actually bringing in more stringent regulations for fire protection systems? I.e., are we requiring fire sprinklers more so than any other community? No, we are not. Because the way this has always worked in past practice, and the way the state's code and our local code works, is we cannot supersede the building code locally. We can't touch it, we can't change the state's rules, and we can't supersede them. Michigan takes and actually reduces fire sprinkler requirements in the building code, and that's, that's as high as we can go. So with that being said, as a, we're asking to formally recognize it. We're proposing to amend the ordinance, as the proposed ordinance, to say, "Hey, Section 903 of the International Fire Code, which says this is where you need fire sprinklers, let's remove that section. Let's take out 903, and then we'll say, in Section 903, let's make it say what's in Section 903 of the Building Code." If you notice, the numbers are the same, Section 903 in building and in fire. That's because of the companion documents. Basically, let's rip out what the Fire Code says and put in what the state building code says. We're formally recognizing our current practice, is what we're proposing. And that is not in the ordinance as presented. That would have to come as an amendment above and beyond what is presented, because that just came up today. So, in short, no, we are not requiring more regulation than anybody else. All right. This is something new and something custom locally. The requiring fire protection system contractors, these are the folks that are licensed to work on fire protection systems, sprinklers, alarms, hood systems. We want to make sure that they are doing the work that they're supposed to be doing, and our community is getting proper work on these required systems, and that they know what the rules of Cadillac are. To put this in perspective, us requiring registration of fire protection system contractors, I estimate 12 to 24 contractors. It's not like we're licensing or registering hundreds of people. This is a very, very small niche market that we're dealing with. So staff burden is not going to be there, or increased burden on staff is not going to be there. It would be a one-time registration. It is a no-fee registration, because the purpose here is to make sure that these contractors know the rules of Cadillac, and are licensed to be doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that way, the end user, the businessperson, the private citizen, whoever it may be, is getting the product that they're requesting. This has not been a major issue. This is not something that, oh my gosh, we've got unlicensed contractors running amok in the city. It could not be further from that. It is just something that we've considered for a long time, and now would be a good time to put this in place. As we're starting to experience growth, we're starting to see changes with the contractors that are coming in and out of the area, so that's kind of why we're asking to get these folks registered, so that way, we know we've got a good exchange of information of what's happening between the contractor and us. Penalties. The, in the Fire Code, we've said, hey, everything civil infraction. Let's keep it simple, right? This is not criminal acts for violating the Fire Code, or the Property Maintenance Code for that matter, with the exception of illegally tampering with, modifying fire protection systems, that's 901, and then blocking exits, that's Section 1034. We're keeping those two critical areas as criminal penalties, as misdemeanor charges. So in summary, we're asking to go from the 2012 International Fire Code to the 2015. We would like to register contractors, fire protection system contractors with the Fire Department, no cost, one time only, and we're keeping tampering with fire protection systems and blocking exits as criminal charges.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll open, open the floor in this public hearing for any public comments as they relate to this public hearing.
Just had a kind of a couple of questions, that's all. My name's Bob Rexford, and I have some rental property in Cadillac. And I just, my question is, Anthony, you mentioned that this code that we've got in place is for all housing, not just rental housing. So in other words, if, I don't know how you go about establishing violations in houses that aren't rental houses, I guess that's my question. If you've, I don't know how you go about answering that. And the other thing you mentioned was that the, the codes will not supersede the building code. So I was glad to hear that, that the Cadillac rental code is not going to be greater or more stringent than the building code in Michigan. Also, I was a little in doubt as to what you were talking about by fire suppression systems. You know, we've got smoke detectors in our rentals. I don't know, you know, what else we need, or if you're talking about factories that have sprinkler systems that you're, you know, inspecting and stuff, but those are the three main kind of questions I had about what you said. So, I don't know if you want to respond to that, or it's just, I can...
I can respond to the first part, and then maybe perhaps Anthony can clarify a couple of the other parts. You know, with respect to enforcement of the code for homes that are non-rental homes, the city would, would pick up on infractions if they're there for other business. So if there's a fire, or some need for emergency response, and upon, you know, being in the premise or at the premise, there were some of these violations that are easily noticed, then those would be, you know, noted and written up, and obviously, we would look for voluntary compliance initially before looking at doing any other kind of enforcement provision. And Anthony, maybe you can help clarify a couple of those other questions that Mr. Rexford asked.
Sure. The fire protection systems, those are your alarm systems, your, your commercial fire alarm systems, your fire sprinkler systems, your commercial kitchen systems. That's what I mean by fire protection systems. We're not talking about residential smoke alarms, residential carbon monoxide stuff. Fire protection system contractors are working on, we'll say, the big stuff.
All right.
But that could apply if somebody, say, had a, had a, had a large rental facility, or a large apartment complex that's fully sprinkled. Then, then that would play in. There was another question, I'm trying to...
Your, the, the city rental code, or whatever, you said wouldn't supersede the building code. In other words, you, I don't know if you lowered one, or what your example was, but you were going through a lot of stuff, and I didn't quite take it all in.
The, the building code will supersede the fire code.
Right. Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing, and move on to any discussion amongst the council.
Don't object, so I'll start. I read through this ordinance this weekend, and I want to thank Anthony for talking to me today. My, my biggest concern is, especially when we're addressing ordinances, is that we have ordinances that are easy for the public to understand what is required of them, and to be able to understand what compliance is. And, and what I had mentioned to Anthony was, because the Michigan Residential Building Code controls the actual requirements for building, I was concerned that the International Fire Code went well beyond what anybody has to follow. So my worry was, if we make the International Fire Code part of our ordinance, people are coming in and looking at requirements that aren't actually requirements. You can't enforce those, because builders are only required to follow the Michigan Residential Property Code. And specifically, one of my concerns was on fire suppression, and that is what Anthony, and thank you, talked about. Maybe we should just insert the Michigan Residential Building Code requirement in that, and I appreciate him doing that. I still have concerns about moving forward with the ordinance right now, because of some of the confusion. And another example is Mr. Rexford's raising the issue of fire suppression. And my concern with that, and this is my own bias, is I think we should keep government at a level that keeps us safe, tells us what we need to do, how to comply in an understandable way, and not build on the bureaucracy. My understanding is that currently, any fire suppression designer or company in the state of Michigan has to be certified by the state of Michigan. Any project that is developed that requires fire suppression, only a licensed firm can design the plans for fire suppression. So an example locally is if we were going to build an apartment building, or we were going to build a plant, a local architect might be able to do, or would be able to do the plans for the actual plant, but they would have to fire, or hire, a state-certified fire protection company. And those plans would either be submitted to the state of Michigan for stamped approval before construction starts, or if the county had a certified person, they would do that through the county department. Understanding, I understand what Anthony wants for the city, is to have these companies registered. I'm afraid that's going to add another layer in, even though it's a non-fee system, that service is already being provided by the state and/or a local agency that's been designated by the state to approve that. So I don't know that we're adding anything to the service to the public, and we're possibly adding confusion by putting that in our ordinance, because really, it's not something that we have authority or control over in the final approval of the plans. What I'd like to see, and another question that I think Mr. Rexford asked that was very on point, is the International Property Maintenance Code is what we have followed for rental units, what we need to do. People are used to going to that. It's fairly straightforward and simple to follow, but I almost think that should be a separate part, and we could go ahead and approve that. The portions that relate to the International Fire Code and amending our ordinances that way, I'd like to see us table that, and maybe even, I mentioned to Anthony, reaching out to the community to talk to the builders, to talk to the architects, because if we haven't, and I think you did a nice job, Anthony, it's not a major issue. We haven't had problems. There's no rush to do that. If we're going to do something, let's do it right, and take our time to do it right, rather than add another layer of ordinances that we may not need, because other agencies are also covering that.
If I can just, if I may, just jump in. Should council wish to table any of it, I would recommend that we table all of it, because it is all tied together, is a part of the recommended action this evening, to amend the various sections in lieu of other sections. So it would be a lot easier administratively for us to pause everything if that's the direction of the board.
So I, I would propose that we table this issue, so that we can have Anthony go back, get some more information, talk to the builders, and then decide how we need to amend the ordinance, because I do think we need to, I think it would be a good idea to adopt the Property Maintenance Code. I have concerns we're causing duplication, and concerns that we may cause confusion if we do what's proposed right now in relation to the Fire Code.
Can we talk a little bit more about the additional regulation, and then, like you said, registering for those licenses for the people installing these sprinkler systems, which is a commercial thing? You said there's 12 to 24 contractors that currently come into the city, and one of the concerns was that as we're growing and developing, we'll get people that aren't, that aren't familiar with the, the rules of Cadillac. But if the rules of Cadillac are equivalent to the state of Michigan, like Steve was saying, like what is, like specifically, what's the additional rule pamphlet or handout that the city Cadillac would be giving with this free registration that, that they may not be getting? Is it a refresher? Is the extra step for the purpose of education? Or is there actual information that they may not see until we hand them something?
Here, I consider us a very proactive fire department, in that we are involved with projects from the ground up, projects from planning forward. The Fire Department participates in site plan review, building plan review, fire protection system plan review, on up through the long-term life of that facility. And with that comes, we have, we have our own permitting process, we have our own plan review process, and with our Fire Code, is we're staying very, we're, we're trying to stay current and consistent with the building code. Not all communities do that. I can think of a community in a county, in an adjacent county, that has an adopted Fire Code that's actually working out of the 2006 edition. So with that being said, local, local government does not have the ability to change the state building code. But we have the ability, if we so choose, to adopt a Fire Code, and we've adopted one for many years. There's inconsistencies around the community, and we at Fire feel it is our objective to maintain consistency with the building code, so that we are at the forefront of fire protection to help minimize risk and loss within the community. The other thing to go with worrying about doing something that another agency is doing, say the state of Michigan, we are still permitting these projects. When I say "we," not only the Fire Department, but the building department, our own city building department, we are still permitting these projects and managing these projects locally. So we feel that there's a very pertinent need to make sure that we are getting licensed contractors in here, that know the rules and regulations, that know the permitting process, so that way, the end user is getting the best building, that is code-compliant, streamlined, nice and easy, best long-term result for everybody involved. And really, just to, it's not about being micromanaging or anything like that. It's about establishing that customer-friendly, a free-flowing exchange of information.
Can they find that information from just going on our website, for instance?
As far as, like a list of contractors?
Well, a list of everything that they, yeah, everything that you would want them, or how often to meet with you. It does seem a little bit...
Bureaucratic.
Bureaucratic, it does. Like, I agree, you know, they're all licensed to begin with, with the state, and now they have to register with the city just to work there. They probably don't have to register with the surrounding township, so it's just that extra layer of, oh man, do I really want to do this work in the city?
So your hope in registering them is so that you have the opportunity, in each instance, with those contractors, to make sure that they understand the city's code?
Absolutely. A prime example of an issue that was encountered recently. A contractor was doing work within the city, been doing work a long time in the city, and was telling people that, hey, you need to do X, okay? Saying, "The code says this, you need to do X," when in reality, our code does not say that. And so it was, it was a clarification point with that person, with that, with that contractor, saying, "Hey, you know what? No, that, this is the city's code. This is what is enforced here, and this is what people are held accountable to. Anything above and beyond that is purely by choice. This is what the standard is." So it's about keeping that level playing field, and make sure people are just getting the service and the systems that they need in the long-term inspection, testing, and maintenance that they need, because people are required to manage these systems. This is not something you can turn a blind eye to. There are annual requirements, and sometimes even greater requirements for certain alarm systems, and people have, they don't have a choice. They have to maintain them. And with that, we feel that it's important that there, that the contractor base here in town is reliable, and knows what is being expected of the person in this town.
So what would be the benefit, if, if I'm one of those contractors, and I take the opportunity to register with you, what benefit do I get from that?
You are approved to do work in the city of Cadillac. You are established on our, here's our list of registered contractors approved to do work in the city of Cadillac. If you don't have somebody on, or if somebody's not on that list and you want to use them, contact the Fire Department, send your information, we'll be happy to get them registered. So there, your name's there, hey, I'm one of the people that can work in Cadillac.
Do they get any additional information? I think that's what, what Robert was referring to. Do, when they register, does it come with, you know, additional education information or whatever?
Yes. That's when the registration stuff, say this is approved, registration goes out, a whole flyer of information. This is where we're at. Here's our codes, any, any amendments that we may make, but this is, this is what's being used in Cadillac. This is what's designed, and this is, this is what inspection, testing, and maintenance is. So that way, everybody is all on the same page, the end user's getting the information, or getting the service that they need, and the contractor has the knowledge, because they have that interface. And also, when, when issues arise on a project, they know where to call. They know who to call. They know our process. They know our permitting process. Excuse me.
So it's really, the idea of it is to, in fact, streamline, streamline the process. And I know that perhaps this is not something that may happen in townships, but this is the kind of thing, registering it within a city is a pretty common thing, if I'm not mistaken.
I want to add something that I don't think we've addressed yet, which is, the
other side of the equation to this program is, if you're registered to do business in the community, and then you fail to meet the local codes, for whatever the reason may be, on whatever the basis is that, that Anthony identifies, or the Fire Marshal identifies, you could lose your registration. And so by adoption of this section into the code, that would, unless the city attorney would disagree with you might, would render that even though your state certified to do business, if you're not a registered contractor through the city's program, you wouldn't be able to do business in Cadillac. Is that the other side of this whole dynamic?
I'd, I'd be concerned that we're holding ourselves out to have authority. If the state requires that you are certified to actually make a plan to put in a fire suppression system and install it, and the city is merely adopting the state code, and the state already has enforcement and the ability to enforce these things, I don't know, and that'd be a question I want to know, another reason the table is, do we have the authority to tell someone who's properly registered with the state and certified that they can't operate in the city of Cadillac? And the question then becomes again, if the state is already handling it, my understanding is right now, especially for a lot of the building code requirements, it's a county building inspector that's the approval process, are we just causing that extra layer of bureaucracy? The concern is, we're simply taking the state code that's already in effect and saying, well, we're going to follow it. Well, anybody that builds in the city of Cadillac has to follow the state code anyways. We're not creating a service for the public, we're creating another barrier. So an architectural firm gets their plans approved by the county So an architectural firm gets their plans approved by the county building inspector, they get them approved by the state for fire suppression, and now we say they have to come to our fire marshal to get an additional approval for something they've already been certified and approved for. I think that's adding a layer of government we don't need.
If I may, I think we've got a bit of a disconnect with the process. The county has no bearing, the county building official has no bearing on construction within the city. We have our third-party system, we have our own building official, our own building inspector, our own electrical, mechanical, and plumbing inspectors. So you bring a project forward, it is submitted here at the city, and it is handled by a third-party contracted service being monitored by the city. With that being said, the state, unless it is a state-regulated facility, i.e., adult foster care home, detention facility like the jail, hospital, those are the only facilities that, or the most common facilities, that the state is actually approving. The Bureau of Fire Services, the Michigan Bureau of Fire Services, who's actually looking forward or looking at those plans from a fire perspective and saying, this is okay for fire. We have no bearing on that. When it comes to all the other projects, which the majority of them are non-state projects, that's all done locally. So our building department, our building inspectors, our electrical, our mechanical, our plumbing inspectors are putting their stamp of approval on it, and then we at the fire department are inter-putting our stamp of approval on it. So the county has no bearing on us, and it's not like people are stopping at the county then coming here and then going to the state. No, it's everything's coming right here, and everything's being approved through the city.
Are we certified right now to be able to pass judgment on a fire suppression system?
Yeah.
You're certified now to do that?
I'm a, yeah.
So then it in fact is not adding a layer of bureaucracy, that this is the place we go, and so this is the place that a builder would go, a contractor would go, and so making sure that the code is in compliance with state and other regulations would then be even more essential since they're not first going to the state then to hear, and being, I'm hearing that, I may be wrong, but I'm hearing that the problem is registering as a contractor, and this is not licensing a contractor. This is, so explain again, the purpose for registering, to make it clear that this is something that helps streamline the process instead of making it more burdensome, I think is my question.
We have all these fire protection systems in town, big ones, little ones. We have a lot of fire protection systems in town. With that, the rules around fire protection systems are very, very particular, because life safety, these are life safety, critical life safety systems, and they need to be inspected, tested, and maintained. Building owners have to do that. With that being said, we are a proactive community, and we have an adopted fire code, okay? Our fire code, we try to keep it at the forefront, which can sometimes put us ahead of other communities, especially, like, we're the only community with an adopted fire code in Wexford County, and it's been that way for many years. But we have these, so we have these rules in place. So we want to make sure that our contractors know, hey, I'm registered with the city of Cadillac, I know they've provided me my packet of information that says these are the codes that I have, I know exactly what standard these systems need to be, what level they need to be maintained to. Everybody's on the same page, and at the end of the day, the life safety system is being maintained in accordance with the codes as established by this community.
But to go to Ms. Shippers' question, what do they get from you that's different from the state code that they already had, seeing that we're adopting the International Fire Code, which is what the state has, which is what they're required to have to be a certified fire suppression company in the first place? So they already have that from the state. What are they getting from us that's different from what they get from the state?
The state does not have an adopted fire code. The state does not have an adopted fire code. So the building code will reference areas that, it'll say, take portable fire extinguishers as an example. The building code will say, portable fire extinguishers are required in your building in accordance with this section, and then section blah, blah, blah of the International Fire Code. So it says, hey, go look at this, and it says, this portion needs to be, this is what you need to pay attention to, just this little portion. Whereas we have adopted this fire code that says, hey, this is the standard for everything fire-related, and that way, our folks have that, because they're not being actually regulated by the state.
But you can't go beyond what the building code requires. So what the state has with the building code that references the fire code is more accurate. If we do this, then there's confusion because there's standards that are in our ordinance that contractors aren't required to follow, but you're putting that information to them when the state says you can have an approved plan without these additional requirements, because it goes beyond the Michigan Building Code.
It's against the law to go beyond the Michigan Building Code, right?
Well, you can't enforce ordinances in Michigan, correct, Anthony, that go beyond the requirements of the Michigan Building Code.
But some communities are on like a 2006 plan, like you said, so Cadillac is pushing the envelope, so if we're adopting, we're moving from 13 to 15, is that what we're...
12 to 15.
12 to 15? And you mentioned earlier that some communities may not have adopted updated language since '06. So if you're installing fire suppression systems in a commercial building, that's, like, how far back can you operate off of an outdated code?
I understand now, that's why I kind of had that puzzled look. All right, so the fire code isn't just new installation, right? The building code is going to address, say, hey, this needs to be installed in accordance with these rules and these years. That's, and that's basically the stopping point of the building code, is, okay, great, this thing's built, it was built in accordance with the code at this time, life is good. And then the building code, the building department, basically forgets about the building. They don't care anymore, so to speak, because it's not being modified. In the fire world, we're in risk management and life safety preservation, right? The fire code has a whole component for long-term management of these systems, of these facilities. So when I say we can't supersede what the building code requires, the building code only requires sprinklers in certain areas, in terms of construction, but there's all this long-term management of these, of these systems. So managing, managing your fire protection, your sprinkler systems, those have to be inspected in accordance with a code. Alarm systems have to be inspected in accordance with a code. We level the playing field and say, it has to be inspected in accordance with the 2015 edition of the International Fire Code. Because it's, that's where fire code works a little bit different from building code. The building code is meant to address an issue now. Fire code is meant to manage issues for longevity of the building. Does that help clarify a little bit?
Have you been able to talk to any of the architects or local builders about how they feel the effect of this would be? Would it be effective? Would it help them? Or whether it would be another later if you actually talked to them?
The issue becomes, we stand a chance by maintaining, by staying with the 2012 fire code, we run into potential conflict in terms of the 15 building code, so a new project gets submitted.
But my question is simply, have you gone out and talked to local companies, builders, architects?
And the registration?
Exactly, and gotten feedback, yes.
I've talked to contractors about this for the last handful of years, and honestly, one of the biggest, or one of the most common questions I'm asked, not by contractors, but by business people with fire protection systems, I'll go out and I'll inspect a system and it needs, it's out of compliance, and I'm like, you need a fire protection, you need to get this taken care of. Most common question I get is, who do you recommend? I am not in a position to recommend anybody. I could say, well, there's a whole Google, you know? But this would give me, and that's kind of where this whole process was born, is, well, wait a second. I started asking these business owners, was, if I were to establish a registration, a registry of these contractors, would that be a benefit to you? Absolutely. Nine out of 10 times, I'm getting, absolutely, that'd be great, because I hand people an information sheet that says, hey, if you have this kind of system, this is what you need to do with it. This is all the boxes you need to check. Then they need somebody to check the boxes for them. This is where the registration comes in.
Wouldn't you agree right now, the alarm systems, EPS, ADT, all those companies maintain both fire and security systems and are certified to do so? So I'm not, I don't know what business people you've talked to, but I'm, again, my biggest concern is creating layers of government and bureaucracy where the need doesn't exist.
So this would be a burden on those 12 to 24 people that had to register. I mean, that's the burden we're talking about, and, you know, then the question would be, is that burden worth, or any benefit, to the greater business community?
Is this ordinance creating a benefit to our citizens?
The registration or the ordinance upgrade? Registration specific?
Both, yeah.
And so the idea behind the registration, the inconvenience would be this, these 12 to 24 fire protection services, contractors who do business in Cadillac?
If they're only 12 to 24? I don't know the answer.
That was just the rough estimate, with more coming in, like you said, as we're growing, so. But that would be a service to the business who wasn't in fire, possibly.
Well, there's a difference between voluntary registry too, so that you have that to give to people. And I still feel like if you've got a contractor who's coming in the city to do that business, we have a website where you should be able to just post, and they can find what standards they have to abide by.
Yes, but I think what Anthony said about being asked, who do I get to do this? I think the benefit to those who register would be, these are the people you could contact.
Why couldn't it be a voluntary registration?
Well, and frankly, you can Google certified fire protection and get your list of, I don't think the city has to spend time doing that, or that it needs a law to do that, which an ordinance is.
I believe that the law needs to be in compliance with the most recent recommendations, and we do have a fire code.
And we talked about adminis, so just really to bring up the tabling part, you talked about tabling is to break it up into different, is that, that's what you're suggesting, not just to take a piecemeal and prove one part?
My recommendation would be, well, first, just to summarize, right? So the primary objective behind the registration program was to have a formal mechanism, a no-fee program, but to have a formal mechanism in place where we're essentially attracting who is certified to be doing this type of work in the community. It's an accountability piece where we are then providing them with, dare I say, white-glove type service, okay, here's our local codes and regulations that you need to abide by, and it creates that sort of joint understanding between the city fire department and the certified contractors that are now also registered in Cadillac, to have that open communication. I totally understand where the conversation is currently about added layers, could be burdensome, what happens if they don't register, I mean, I kind of get that piece to it. If the city council wants to move the conversation forward in any way, whether that's tabling it or whether that's approving it, we would need a motion to do so. If the motion is going to be to table it, my recommendation this evening is to not separate the parts, because they are intertwined between the various sections of the code. It would be easier for us from an administrative position to bring back for your future consideration an updated version of the recommendations that either has, you know, some changes to it or whatnot based upon further feedback that we may receive from the public. So my request is that we don't try to separate it and approve it in a part and deny it in a part, but rather, we just either approve it all or as amended, or we just table it all. I'm not sure, Anthony, if there's anything more that you wanted to add to it, but as I tried to throw out before, you know, there is a stick to this, right? There's a carrot and a stick. You know, so as our fire marshal used the example of, you know, just an example, he gets a request for a recommendation for a company to use, while he's not going to necessarily be out there advocating any specific company, if we had a registration, it would be a public document, and we could certainly say, well, here are, here's a list of registered companies that are registered as a part of the city's program, and people might choose a company off of that list. That's just an example for that method. The stick, though, on the other hand, as I mentioned before, is if there are issues, and there are probably a whole slew of what-if scenarios that we could go through, you know, issues in working on a particular project or program that we're having with a particular contractor, what hangs in the balance would be, in essence, the fact that they're registered to do business in the city, and that's where I would lean on the city attorney to clarify the whole authority piece, because as Councilmember King mentioned, well, if you're, you know, if you're certified to do business under state law, then how is it that, you know, the city can essentially trump that, is what I was reading, you know, from, or interpreting from what you said.
What I'm saying is, why take over that if the state already has it in place and we have that ability?
And I think, just to summarize, where our fire marshal was going with it was not necessarily to register these folks to ensure that they're up to speed on all the state standards, but really to register them to make sure that they're up to speed on our local standards and practices. So again, it's a tough one. I mean, it's certainly something new. It certainly does add a layer, regardless of how painful the registry, I mean, the registration might be a two-minute-long process, you know, who are you, what's your, you know, your state certification number, what's your contact information, and by the way, here's a link or here's a pamphlet to the local information. It still is an added step, it still is something that we would be adding into the process. And so that's a good point that was raised this evening. And ultimately, Anthony, unless you need to correct anything I just said, I think the question to the city council is, what is your comfort level? And to be able to move forward from where you're at right now, we would need to have a motion that would either, you know, adopt it as presented, adopt it as presented with the following amendments, or if you wanted to table it, again, my sincere recommendation is we would table the whole sort of proposition or proposition at this point in time, and then we would bring it back to you after our fire department does a little further digging and research on it, so.
I guess, as I think it's important to do things with knowledge rather than guessing, I think there's enough questions at this point, and I think as Anthony said, there's not a major issue that we've seen. This is something we're looking at doing. I'd say to make sure we do it right, I would now make a motion to table this requested ordinance in its entirety, so that it would give the fire marshal and staff a chance to come back with us with the answers to the questions that have been raised and amendments, which may or may not include all of what we have tonight.
So that was a motion?
That was a motion.
Support. House Member King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a couple of special guests here this evening. They are here to present the Lake Cadillac Annual Report. With us is Dr. Jennifer Brown.
Jermellus Jones.
Jermellus Jones, I'm sorry, I don't know where I, I'm just making things up on the fly. Should've just gone with it, sure!
The first part, right?
I didn't have my cheat sheet in front of me, I apologize. But thank you for coming.
Very welcome. Thanks for inviting us.
Yes.
And thanks for this, to the city of Cadillac for allowing us to have the opportunity to work on Lake Cadillac. We have worked on Lake Mitchell for a long time, and, 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 thank you, and we were pretty surprised of how very different those two lake systems are. And I know all of you have received the annual progress report, and I apologize after the fact that it's a bit technical. Feel free to ask me any questions regarding the report anytime, phone, email, or even during this presentation. I tried to condense the report into a summary using just a few slides, which was very challenging, but I hope that this will help clarify. Contour Map, and they're very attractive to look at. The dark blue areas represent deeper areas in the lake. Typically, those are usually in the center of the lake, and in this lake they're not. And then the lighter blue areas are shallower areas, and so we often see significant variation among lakes. This is very useful as a tool, because over the years, you can calculate changes in water volume or changes in depth contours that would affect the growth of vegetation and other aspects. Whoops.
So what's the deepest part of the lake, Jennifer?
Oh, it's, there's a scale on there. I believe it's almost 28 feet and some odd change. The second scan is what we call Relative Bottom Hardness Scan. So what this is saying isn't necessarily that the lake has hard bottom everywhere, but that the areas that are a light orange or a beige color are softer relative to the darker orange color. So we tend to have more of a consolidated bottom around the shoreline areas, and then offshore, the softer muck, as you would call it, or silt or sediment. And it's common for most lakes. The third scan, and this is probably most relevant to the program, is the Aquatic Vegetation Biovolume Scan. And these are always a little shocking, because we tend to think of our inland lakes as being overly weedy, especially during the season when everybody's out swimming and skiing on the lakes. And what this scan shows is the relative biovolume. So the dark blue areas, which is most of the lake, is not showing a lot of vegetation. But then we see areas of dark red, which are either topped out, canopied, can be curly leaf pondweed, which is one of the invasives we manage on the lake, another one being Eurasian water milfoil, and in some cases, it can even be floating leaf vegetation like lily pads. And the areas that are green are what we call the favorable low-growing plants. So they're the plants that tend to be good fish cover, but not really interfere with boating and recreational activities. This is a useful map, because in addition to creating the treatment maps, which are given to the applicators for treatment of the invasive species, this is something you can compare over the years to find out how successful your treatment program has been. So certainly, in the 2018 report, we would be comparing 2017 biovolume to 2018 biovolume, and we'd be able to say how much of the nuisance biovolume has been reduced. These, of course, are our usual offenders in the lake, obviously have been managed for quite some time, the Eurasian water milfoil, hybrid ice strain, as well as the curly leaf pondweed, which, in some cases, we decide not to actually have chemically treated, just because it does tend to die back on its own by late July, mid-August. So it's just a waiting game to see whether it's too dense in areas that would cause issues for boaters. This is the Eurasian water milfoil treatment map, just shy of 14 acres from last year. Those are all referenced, geo-referenced GPS points that basically are showing the locations of the milfoil, and we can track those over time as well. So we can find out if some of the efforts have been more successful in some areas of the lake than others, and why or why not. But ultimately, we want to see the acreage go down over time, which it has been in the past and also now. And this is the map that was showing the curly leaf, curly leaf and milfoil appear to be overlapping. They're coexisting in the same beds, and so that does present a bit of a challenge, because we tend to use a systemic herbicide on the milfoil versus something like a contact herbicide on the pondweed. So you could either treat this with a contact herbicide to kill both, or you could do the ecologically responsible thing and systemically kill the milfoil, and then the curly leaf should die back on its own later in the season. That was the approach we took last year. So, this is the big slide. We were very surprised about a number of things on the lake. We knew about the milfoil problem, we knew there was curly leaf. We did not realize that the lake had dissolved oxygen depletion. So what's happening is, this lake is stratifying, we're getting the cooler water at the bottom, the warmer water at the top, and you probably, if you've gone swimming in the lake, have observed the thermal climb. Everybody knows what that feels like in the lakes, that we're having dissolved oxygen at a very low concentration towards the bottom after midsummer. And the reason why this is problematic is because we know that the sediments in the lake now have a lot of phosphorus, and we also know that the phosphorus concentrations in the water column itself are higher than the eutrophic threshold of about 25 micrograms per liter. So we've got phosphorus in the water column, we've got phosphorus in the sediment, and we have low oxygen at the bottom. It's the perfect recipe for release and circulation of phosphorus throughout the entire lake basin. Over time, what this leads to is increased productivity. So sometimes that results in more aquatic vegetation growth, sometimes that results in more algae growth. And what's starting to happen on Lake Cadillac is we're starting to have a lot more algae and a lot less vegetation, and that's not a healthy scenario. It's very difficult to get an aquatic ecosystem back in balance when that conversion has been completed. We start moving away from a lake management aspect and having to move into a lake restoration aspect, which is always more costly and certainly a lot more intensive. So I got a lot of calls this summer asking about, what are we going to do about the blue-green algal blooms? They're terrible this year. They're worse this year than they had been in previous years. And my answer to that is that this is not going to be a quick fix. Any kind of technology that we would recommend be implemented in a lake like this, we would want to make sure that we had all the data necessary to present to the city and the public before they spent any kind of big money to restore the lake and to get rid of the algal blooms. So what does that mean? Well, that means we have to find out where all these nutrients are coming from. And the only way really to do that is to set up an immediate watershed plan, critical source areas, measure the stormwater coming into the lake, and multiple parameters for that. And then, once we have all of that data, come up with mitigation strategies for reducing those nutrients in those problem areas, and then see how the lake responds. If the lake still isn't responding well, or it's not going back into the original state where it's clearer and has less algae, then we have to start talking about a within-basin solution. So we felt it was really important to mention these things. Certainly, it's a little too early to start implementing anything like that, and it's not part of the current program, but we wouldn't really be doing our job well if we weren't mentioning these things of concern when we're out there collecting the data. One of the last things I had on here was the biodiversity of the sediment macroinvertebrates. Typically, we'll see between five and 10 taxa, and a lot of abundance of each taxa. And we had pretty low-quality taxa in many of the samples, and so that's a concern, because that kind of gives us more evidence that our bottom environment, at the bottom of the lake especially, and low oxygen, is just not favoring a very healthy macroinvertebrate population. And remember, those are the bugs. Those are, you know...
Does that eventually affect the fishing?
Yeah, it can, over a period of time, because that's what they're eating. And so it's very important to protect the bentos. So we made some recommendations, and of course, these are not things that need to be done right away, but some of them are very tangible. Goose control, we offer different aspects to be able to control that population, especially in the parks. We could set up some pilot programs with the Michigan Natural Shoreline Partnership for soft shorelines and putting in more riprap. And one of the big things that people could do, it's very simple, but it certainly isn't the most accepted, is to start not mowing right to the water's edge and having some of those grasses grow up to trap some of the fertilizers and whatnot coming into the lake. Which brings to another point. It has been taught excessively over the last 10 years, don't use fertilizer with phosphorus. So now people are buying fertilizers with nitrogen. Well, nitrogen, in particular, ammonia nitrogen, which is very high in most fertilizers, is one of the most mobile nutrients in the groundwater. And so what happens with these nutrients is, they get into the water table, they come up through the lake bottom, and they feed all of those vegetation beds. So not a good scenario. We recommend just watering with the lake water and recycling it back through the soil, rather than putting any kind of fertilizer on at all. Stormwater sampling, this is something we've been taking a look at. I have an overwhelming map that was sent that has, I can't remember how many, and it is overwhelming, how many storm drains around the lake. It was just astronomical. But being able to, I guess, scientifically hypothesize which of these drains have a higher probability of contributing higher loads and nutrients and pollutants than other ones. So we're trying to fine-tune that, and that's something that we hopefully can pursue. Obviously, algal reduction is something we need to have happen, but again, we have to find out where the nutrients are coming from, find out ways to reduce them in the immediate watershed, and then deal with the in-basin issue. One of the things that was discussed is, since Lake Mitchell also has its own issues, and you could not have two completely different lakes connected. It is unbelievable how different they are. But they're both, even though they're both technically in their own watersheds, we still have that inflow from Mitchell to Cadillac, and then out to the dam, of course. So there are going to be some land use practices in one that affect the other potentially. So we felt that it would be good to include the two of those, and we probably can talk about that with the Mitchell Board during one of their next meetings. So that is all I had. Is there any questions?
I have a question.
Is he allowed to ask?
Do I have to wait?
Gotta wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have maybe a silly question. If one of the issues is the high phosphorus or nitrogen, and people obviously do fertilize their lawns, is there a way to put out, is there a way for you to test, I mean, is there a legitimacy in saying, you're getting more fertilizer for your lawn on the lake if you just water with the lake water versus putting commercial fertilizer on it, that it's not really necessary at this point? Is that a fair, would that publicly get out some word to change some habits on fertilizing?
So, yeah, one of the things that we were looking at doing, and I know that we were talking about doing it towards the end of the summer of '17, but I know Todd felt it was a little early, so we're thinking about doing it this season, having a big lakes expo, including both Mitchell and Cadillac, and actually having it advertised in the paper well in advance of it, so we could get a good turnout. We had one for Mitchell a few years back, but we did not have the turnout quite that we wanted. But actually have a good venue where it can accommodate a lot of people, and just bring a ton of samples and information and pamphlets for people, and also do a write-up on all that information for the newspaper. We're trying to get as much information out to the public as possible on how to protect the lake.
So, and we're not, we're not just talking about people who live on the lake, we're talking about people who live on the hills, right? And that's all running down into the lake.
Which is, yeah, that's the need for the immediate watershed part of it, because if we find areas of impairment, you know, at the top of some of these hills, usually it's things as simple as, there's a barren lot that's not vegetated, and it happens to be at a high slope. So every time there's a heavy rainfall event, it comes washing right into the lake. Things like that can be pretty easily remedied, but we just need to be able to find all of them.
And I think the other thing that the city has a real opportunity to do is, you own a major part of the shoreline around Lake Cadillac. And you're doing a lot of things right right now, but there's some cheap things you can also do, such as not managing the area right on the shoreline of the lake, which helps to keep the geese off. Geese are really conscious of predators.
Mike, can you talk into the microphone?
I'm sorry. Are really conscious of predators. So extra grasses or planting shrubs or that type of thing really discourage geese. And Jennifer's done a little research, and I have two, on geese. And the gigantic geese that are common to this area in northern Michigan defecate between one and a half and two pounds each. And when you see 200 to 300
Of phosphorus.
Geese out there, you know, it starts to really accumulate. Our understanding is the city is watering the park area with the lake. That's a great, great thing to do. Our understanding for the last 15 years or more that the city is not using phosphorus fertilizer. But let's get rid of any fertilizer in that strip and see how things respond. So, you know, what we've recommended as a team are relatively cheap approaches until we gather more information that the city can implement. And Jennifer talked quite a bit about stormwater. We've already sat down with Mr. Dietland and started the process. You know, it's something that we can provide as a company to do the monitoring, but it's a lot cheaper if the city can. So, you know, Jeff is looking at some modifications of equipment and being able to do it in-house. So we're trying to keep it reasonably cost-effective until we figure out more about what's happening out there.
We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So what do you see down the road in terms of the combined watershed plan with Lake Mitchell?
Well, I think one of the things that we've learned is that you can look at a system and think you understand it, but then after you study it, realize you don't. You know, there's a lot of things that are unknown or confusing or surprises, like the low DO we found in the lake. So I think with an immediate watershed plan, including both, it's going to allow us to target all of what we call the critical source areas. So instead of looking way up the watershed into areas that drain into another area, another area, another area, ones that are draining directly into the lakes and that are directly having an impact on water quality. So it'll be, we'll be able to identify all those areas, and then come up with recommended best management practices for each one of those areas. So it's a step towards, I guess, preserving a lake and hopefully not allowing both lakes to go in a more negative direction in terms of water quality impairments and nutrient loading.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and this evening, we have a couple of appointments.
It says being recommended to approve the reappointment of Thomas Olmstead to the cemetery board for a three-year term to expire on January 17, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Tom Olmstead to the cemetery board for a three-year term expiring on January 17, 2021.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
It also says we are recommended to approve the reappointment of Chris Huckle to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 6, 2022.
I wonder how long Chris Huckle's been serving?
I was just looking to see if I could find that.
He was originally appointed in 2006, it says.
Thank you.
2006?
Yeah. Make a motion to reappoint Chris Huckle to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 6, 2022.
I wonder how long Chris Huckle's been serving?
I was just looking to see if I could find that.
He was originally appointed in 2006, it says.
Thank you.
2006?
Yeah. Make a motion to reappoint Chris Huckle to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 6, 2022.
Support. Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to present the annual State of the City address. This is for 2017. Before I begin, I must thank my staff. They are absolutely a critical component and part of putting this thing together. All of the staff had their hands and fingers involved in this thing, especially finance being the first clearinghouse, and then community development and actually piecing together using this newer software, the presentation with all the data that we have. So thank you, Owen and John, very, very much, for all of the time spent. Did John leave? No, John didn't leave. He's hiding in the back. So as we begin, one of the first things that you're going to notice are all the animations in this presentation. And I promise you that not all of the slides look like this, but this is our mission, and with this new software, we can now zoom into it, at least a little bit. And so just to read for the public record, "It is the mission of the City of Cadillac to be a well-managed, environmentally conscious, and fiscally responsible appealing community in northwest Michigan." to be a well-managed, environmentally conscious and fiscally responsible appealing community in Northwest Michigan. We will encourage and advocate for an environment for living and working that is founded upon a strong community spirit of trust, broad-based citizen involvement, and dignity and respect for all, regardless of gender, ethnic, social, or economic backgrounds. As we move into our goals, which, as you have all seen earlier this evening, follow in our budget as well. It starts with the mission, then our vision statements, and then our goals. The city several years ago adopted essentially four key categories that I'm going to just briefly touch upon this evening. Those four main categories are community development and enhancement, public safety, economic health and development, and customer service and organization enhancement. And for anybody that is curious about getting a copy of this presentation, this will be posted online and linked in some fashion through our social media site, Facebook as well. I am not going to go through and read every, every single bullet. There's approximately 100-plus slides that compose this presentation. And so you'd be hearing me speak for two hours if I did that. But what you'll find under each of these main categories is a further breakout of what they mean to us, what they mean to this council and to this organization and to the community. And so just as a, for instance, as we look at community development enhancement, we want to promote a positive image. We want to advance quality of life, maintain and improve civic infrastructure, and so on. And as you go through the slideshow on your own time or perhaps visiting our city website, which is cadillac-mi.net, you'll be able to take a deeper dive into this information. This information is also a part of our annual budget, which is, which is always available online as well. You'll find it towards the, the beginning of that document, just after the transmittal letters from the mayor and from myself. So again, public safety, and it'll break it down into some of the key salient categories that, that sort of feed that goal. Under economic health and development, it's a, it's a catch-all. Obviously, we want to support our business development. As we had some robust conversation earlier this evening, it's all in good spirit to make Cadillac a place where people can, can feel comfortable in doing business and, and for folks to know we are open for business. Customer service and organization enhancement, we currently and always strive in making things more effective and more efficient for folks coming to our front counter, as well as for our own staff and getting the job done. We try to employ to the best that we can modern technologies and certainly do so in a fiscally responsible manner. Talking just a little bit about our community as a whole, urban density. You know, Cadillac being measured against the four surrounding townships, as you can see, we are certainly by far the densest based on population and housing at 668 units per square mile and over 1,400 folks per square mile. Whereas the, the nearest township or adjacent community which would be hearing has 43 housing units per square mile and, and 98 folks or people per square mile. So there's a, there is a significantly dramatic difference in the composition of our community as we relate to the surrounding municipalities in our area. Similarly, Cadillac, the City of Cadillac is a population center. Our population swells by over 60% during the daytime. Per our last census numbers, our, our population is 10,335. And you'll see, as for instance, that number fluctuating a little bit within this report. There are some updated census estimates that are out there. I want to say they're 10,400 and change now for our current population. But regardless, the point of this slide is to show that we are a place of commerce. We are a place of business, and during the day, our population does swell. Where our work hub is, I think everybody here knows, we have trades located here from construction to healthcare and social services, lodging, food service, certainly manufacturing and industrial, the heartbeat of the community, followed by retail trade. Organizational snapshot, we have approximately 74 full-time positions. Right now, I want to say it's actually closer to 71.6, but we've been using 74 as that number that are responsible for everything that we provide service-wise. That includes processing of taxes and receipts over 44,000 annually, maintenance of over 88 miles of streets, 50 miles of sewer mains, 74 miles of water mains, all of the fire runs, all of the crimes that are investigated. It's all done by that group of 74 full-time employees. Moving forward into community development, the city, as we know in prior briefings, is going through the Michigan Redevelopment Ready Community Program. The city's latest update, which was previously presented on about, about a month ago, I believe, has us about 40% complete. We are moving as fast as we can to finish that. We are beyond minimum thresholds as required by the state to be able to be applicable, or excuse me, able to apply for various grants, such as technical service grants through the Michigan RRC program. There are many communities across the state that are going through this process, and we are certainly eager, eager to achieve it. The whole objective, again, behind this process is to be better equipped and better ready to deal with new business opportunities, development opportunities that may come through our doors. It's essentially a self-assessment certification-type program, and it will, dare I say, add a lot of paperwork, but it will, it'll add a lot of paperwork to identify all of our processes and programs that are in place and help us update those to more contemporary standards. Master plan and zoning ordinance activities. This is an example of a concept that we put together for an area agency. You know, the city offers a full suite of services. And so, you know, as you look at this map, oops, as you look at this map, you can see that we have the, the technology in-house to create for planning purposes a whole host of different concepts. And so this is a concept for an office complex master plan in the vicinity where the hospital is at. It shows different roads. It shows different potential opportunities for how the zoning can be updated and for how a build-out of a plan can go into place. And so, you know, we would, we go through these types of discussions and conversations with essentially anybody that, that has a plan or has an idea for a plan. We will help to vet that plan and help piece it together. Some of the new activities, evaluating future land use districts for conformity with our new zoning ordinance, comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance to include new zoning maps. That's something, again, that we're doing as a part of the Redevelopment Ready Communities Initiative. Cadillac Commons, I'm sure that everybody in this room sitting at the, at the dais is very familiar with Cadillac Commons. This is simply a graphical representation of the geographic area that we commonly call Cadillac Commons. As you can see, it's highlighted in red, Harris Street to the north, Chapin Street to the south. It includes the, the pavilion, the city park, the plaza, the market, and the White Pine Trailhead. These are the major placemaking projects that had recently been underway, recently completed, or are currently underway. As we look, one of the very first ones that finished was the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion. This is a list of some of the key project features that I, that I know a lot of folks are very familiar with. As we look at the next update, the plaza, again, that's, that's open, it's running. We expect it to be an ever-more-popular site over time. It's our newest public gathering space and parking area, and we're very, very proud of it. In fact, we received congressional recognition that behind Councilmember Shippers is a plaque from our congressman that, that specifies that. The market is another project that we are very, very proud of. While it may not look like there's a lot of activity happening right now, believe it or not, there is. There are materials that are dropped off at the site currently that are being, that are essentially staged for when the weather breaks. The roof structure or the market structure itself is in town and is being prepped and being painted. And so, once, once the weather breaks and once that activity is done, we expect to see the, the steel frame erected on site, followed by the roof. And we hope to see the, the project done this summer. As mentioned on the slide, you're going to see some additional parking. We're going to see some wind screens, some heaters. It's not going to be a facility that you're going to want to use in the dead of winter, but it is going to be a facility that we would expect folks to be able to use in, in the fall and when it is chilly out, whether it's for farmer-market type purposes or for other special events and activities. And most interestingly, interestingly, of course, is the specially-designed quilt floor that's going to be installed as a part of the project. It's a part of the patronicity crowdfunding campaign. Dollars were raised to install a design that was developed and created by our mayor. And so it's a really neat project that I think is going to be here to, to serve Cadillac for, for many generations to come. Looking at the trailhead, this is a project that, I'll go back to the graphic really quick. The graphic is just a conceptual rendering of the trailhead space itself. This is a project that we applied for to the State Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund. A couple of years ago, we got denied. They, they frankly gave us some comments that the location of the path of the trail, given that it was originally planned to be behind various buildings, running along adjacent to the railroad right-of-way on the east side of Lake Street, wasn't necessarily the best location in Lansing's mind for where it should go. And in the advice that they gave the city, they talked about if it could be adjacent to a waterway, you could score more points. If it could be adjacent to an existing sidewalk, you could score more points. And so in an effort to score more points, the trail connection piece from where the trailhead currently ends, which is at Lake and South Street, that it got relocated to the west side of the road. And ultimately, the trailhead itself didn't change. That's still on the east side of the road, immediately adjacent to the After 26 Depot Cafe and Amvet's, the location of the current farmers' markets that, that locate during our, our summer and fall seasons. So amenities and some project features for this would include, obviously, an opportunity for people to get out of the sun, an opportunity for people to get a drink of water, perhaps some wayfinding signage to other trails within our community and area, wayfinding to other places that they can go in our downtown. We have seen some portable bike repair and maintenance stations that we'd love to be able to install one or two of those as well as a part of this project. We're looking at using perhaps the Clock Tower gazebo that's currently located on Mitchell Street and Cass Street as a focal point for the trailhead piece, as a, as not just a piece of public art, but a functional piece of public art, where people can congregate under there as well. We're still waiting to get our grant agreement from the state, but assuming that things continue to move along, we would anticipate that this would be a, a project that would be open in the summer of 2019. It's important to note that it's a 70% funded grant. It's also important to note that the Rotary Club of Cadillac held a capital fundraising campaign last spring and helped generate some significant dollars to, to help us meet our local match. And but once we have the project bid out and have a final budget for the project, we'll be able to identify other local sources of funding to make it all work. And so, again, a community project, we're very excited to be able to move forward with. Cadillac West is another area. When I came to town about eight years ago, this was an area that I had essentially testified as a part of my interview where I saw the most potential improvement and most potential for opportunity for change in this community. And I still feel that way today. What you see on the screen is an example of, of just some conceptual renderings based on conversations that we've recently had with an out-of-town developer and with a local property owner. Again, we're willing to go through these kinds of exercises with folks that come forward to us with, with plans for change. This is something that just shows a what-if. This is not necessarily what is going to happen, but it's based on conversation that occurred and it maps out the area. So, you know, it's, it's a very important area in our community that I recognize is tired, perhaps, but it isn't an area in the community that has, that has been forgotten. And that's important that people understand that publicly. In fact, just to, just to refresh the City Council, the city did receive, at the tail end of, of last calendar year, Technical Services Grant from Networks Northwest to move forward, under their facilitation, and looking at creating perhaps a whole new corridor improvement authority for that area. An authority that perhaps could include not just the city, but also the area townships. So make it a multi-jurisdictional corridor improvement authority. Because as I think some folks may or may not realize, that area is not just, is not just the city. It's the city and it's some of the surrounding townships all have business interests in that area. And if we could create a multi-jurisdictional authority for that area and capture that tax base mutually to be able to then improve the infrastructure, whether that's softscapes, hardscapes, lighting, landscaping, whatever the case might be, it's going to improve things for everybody. Downtown redevelopment is certainly something that I think everyone's been hearing about in the news and what we've been talking about. It's certainly, some exciting things are happening. We've seen the, the former M.DOT State Building, the Cobbs and Mitchell Building, be acquired and is going through a transformation right now. Some of the key project features include seeing Perrin and New Off Engineering relocating to this new office. We believe that there's going to be a total attraction of approximately 25 to 35 jobs to that area. The construction on site is essentially on pause on the outside, given the season that we're in, but it is moving forward on the inside currently. And once winter breaks, we'll see more activity, finishing it off and seeing the tenants move in. Olson Block redevelopment, this is another huge one that's out there. Before I move to project features, this is, again, just a conceptual rendering of potentially what might happen out there. If you look at the, the screen, this, where my little pointer is, is the old former grocery store site. The blue represents three new buildings. Whether or not we end up with three new buildings, or two new buildings, or four new buildings, or one new building, all of this is still subject to, to determination by the development team that's, that's being put in place to make the project go. But this is, as we move into project features, you know, as it's being discussed, three zero-lot line, four-story mixed-use building concepts. These are zero-lot line, meaning that it's going to look like a, you know, a downtown building right up to the sidewalk, which is exactly what you would want to see in a traditional downtown, like what Cadillac has. Mixed use, meaning that you're going to have some mix of retail or commercial professional services on your main level, with then residential on the second, third, and fourth stories. And we're talking about millions of new investment to the community through this project. This is truly a transformational project, not just to downtown Cadillac, but to the whole community once this is built. And so it's really an exciting time to be here and to see this kind of development being talked about and hopefully implemented. The former Better Bodies property as well has been acquired. Again, just a conceptual rendering of what a future build-out of that space might look like. Some of the key project features are similar to what I was talking about for the Olson Block. You know, in this case, it takes a currently condemned building, out of condemnation, puts it back into active use, puts it back on the tax rolls. It could be a retail spot, a restaurant spot, an office use, a combination of, of all of that. And it certainly will improve the, the southernmost gateway to the downtown core area. Moving forward into police, this is a graph of the activity levels. I recognize that it's a little hard to look at. I, I recognize that it's a little hard to look at, but the arrests trend is the bottom, the bottom line. The service call trend is the middle red line. And the top line are crimes investigated. You'll see that essentially crimes investigated and service calls reported are essentially flat. The arrests however, did go back up to essentially a flat level from where we were a couple of years back. They trended downward last year and the year before, and now they're, they're basically back up to par. And talking with our police captain, there really isn't any specific thing to point to that led to the reduction nor that's leading for us to be essentially back up to our average. But that was the most notable thing to point out on the slide. The micro reports of the Michigan incident crime reporting data that we have, while you might think it's, it's out of date, it's actually the most up to date data that we do have from 2014, 15, and 16. Again, as you can see in the numbers, things are, are very flat, which is relatively speaking a good thing to see. Obviously, you'd love to see significant reductions, but being realistic, you know, not seeing significant increases is certainly a nice thing to see. With respect to violent crime, the same thing. In fact, you'll see that it went down by one under, under the total, but otherwise is, is remaining relatively, relatively flat numbers. Crimes per thousand, and here's where you'll notice that there's a slight difference in the population number. But crimes per thousand in 2015 were 4.8, 2016 are 4.6. Property crimes per thousand, 26.2 in 15, 28.6 in, in 16. And then you'll see that there was a slight uptick in overall population as well from 15 to 16. Crime prevention and community partnership. This is a, a program that I believe was, was formally spoken about and introduced about a year ago as a part of this presentation. These are the cornerstones of that community partnership program. There are four pillars, as they call them. I call them cornerstones, but four pillars, neighborhoods, schools, businesses, and rental housing. Again, I'm not going to go through all of it, but essentially think of this as a, a much more robust neighborhood watch type program where the police department takes a more active role in, in, in a neighborhood watch program and not just simply a program that is up to the neighbors to, to completely facilitate. And there are some of those examples, whether it's through our foot patrols, bicycle patrols, helping in, in cleaning up community blight, which they've done from time to time in partnership with other city departments. It's really a, a more of a proactive program that the department takes. Schools are a major component of this program. We do have a school resource officer that's in place. This is a position by the way, that was partially funded through the federal cops grant that the city has gotten several years in a row. Teaching, educating, and mentoring is a part of the TEAM acronym that is in place. There's a junior police program. We are involved in the OK to Save program. And certainly the schools make up a, an important pillar of the system. Inserted businesses. Crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED, is, is something that we are strongly encouraging. And when we look at various site plans and things that come through our organization for approvals, if there is something that we notice, whether it's a, a lighting issue or a landscaping issue or some combination thereof, we certainly look at providing some feedback to, to have some creative solutions in place for new businesses and for other sites when they, when they get fully developed. Rental housing is also another major piece to this. We've implemented crime-free leasing addendum. This is a program that has opened up communication channels far further and sort of wider than we've had with property management companies ever before. It's resulted in certain community areas to see sort of a transition and a change from being a location where our police department would respond to very frequently to a place where they don't have to respond to very frequently. And so, it's certainly been well worth our time and energy. Community policing strategy, again, just focusing in more on rental housing, talks about the partnership that we've created, the crime-free leasing addendums, and how we've really been able to, to move forward with that program. And with respect to personalized service to rental communities, you know, we're really trying to focus on the long-term relationships. Residents coming in or out are going to change from time to time, but making, making sure that we have a relationship with those agencies or with those companies and the city are really important in order to help focus on long-term strategies and keeping that open. And this is just a list of all of the different rental communities that, that currently we're working with. And so, it's, it's more than one or two, and I thought it would be, be neat to show. There's the zoomed in version of it. Again, the neighborhoods, this might be a duplicate slide, and I apologize if it is, but we're looking at creating neighborhood programs that are specific to the rental communities and certainly to, to try to get out ahead of it, being proactive as we identify problems and implement creating, creative solutions. The police department also does what it can to, to self-promote itself. An example includes the 9/11 expo. We're out trick or treating with the kids essentially while on patrol. And we sponsor the second annual shop with a cop program. We also have a, a separate police department Facebook page in which they have their own list of followers on social media, which is something that we found to be very beneficial to the community. Moving right along into the fire department. Operationally, proud to say again that the fire department has saved nearly 90% of potential fire losses with estimated losses of $133,000 that did happen. The potential losses is over 1.2 million. And you know, the, the, the only way that, that you're going to save property and save life and protect your neighborhoods is to have, you know, a full-time, fully-trained fire department that has a facility and access to equipment nearest your population centers. And we're very proud that we do have that here in our city. We are able to respond usually within four to five minutes or, or less to fire scenes. We have fortunately not had any fatalities or injuries due to fires this past year. We did have 42 fires that we did respond to. Other incidents, we had over 2,000 calls for service. As you'll see here, a vast majority of them are emergency medical responses. We have had over 1,700 of those. We've had, you know, a few dozen, you know, false alarms, little over 100, you know, good intent calls. That's when somebody, you know, calls because they believe that there's a fire or something that's happening that's out of control. And then we would respond and it's, it's not, you know. We've had some hazardous conditions we've had to respond to and other general service calls. The city has a wonderful relationship with, with North Flight. We have a firefighter paramedic that goes out on, on every EMS call that comes in the city with a North Flight paramedic and a North Flight rig that is housed, or ambulance that's housed here in our, in our fire department. One of the department highlights is the partnership that we had with Resurrection Life Church, Blickdill Insurance, and Advanced Mechanical. They helped us create essentially what we're calling a cancer prevention lab. And not that I'm trying to, to make fun of that because it looks like a laundry room, but it truly is a method in which you need to get the hazardous materials out of the turnout gear. The red locker is not a locker, it's a dryer. And the washer to the right is a heavy-duty commercial washer that's capable of cleaning multiple pieces of turnout gear at, at a time. And so, now we're able to very quickly and efficiently clean our gear with the proper equipment as soon as the crew gets back from, from a fire scene. Training, some interesting stats. We have trained about an average of 10.2 hours per firefighter per month. That equals about a 36% increase or over 2,800 hours of training annually, which is something I think that's impressive and it's important. While they're not out responding to a call, whether it's fire or medical-based, they are busy keeping up to speed on the latest practices and techniques. Prevention. Community outreach is certainly a key goal of our, of our prevention program. Some of the stats that we have, we reached over 2,500 people over the year with, with 600 just as a part of the safety expo. Another 1,400 kids, not including the prevention week, with annual average program attendance of over 230 people. So throughout the course of the year, we're actively engaging in the community, talking about fire prevention and other techniques. Additionally, we're proud to, to say how our violations are down. They're down by three, but they're still down. Over the last year, we've also been a part of 15 different plan reviews, 10 different fire investigations, and four fires we were able to help determine were linked to an arsonist. And that three individuals are now being successfully prosecuted as a part of that. So it's, it all sort of, you know, connects together because we have these programs and these resources, we're able to help make the community a safer place. Further, talking about building permits as, as it relates to the fire department which manages that program, permits are up by about 12%. Average permit cost is $223, which is a decrease of 8%. And we've managed inspections for over 300 home rental permits just this past year. Public works, we love to show off our equipment. Our streets department essentially was responsible for repaving, or the city I should say, undertook the repaving of all portions of 11 streets totaling over 2.1 miles. This is the list of those streets that we undertook last year, just for reference purposes. We know that some of them didn't get done as quick as, as the neighborhood would like, but we certainly are thankful for the patience of everybody involved. And we're certainly pleased to be able to provide everyone with, with a new street as well. Street patching and repair, we used 80 tons of patch last year. So that's, you know, almost 160,000 pounds and spent over 1,700 hours during, doing that activity. And we'll likely be doing that all over again this year, once, once we're out of winter. Snow plowing activities, spent over 4,000 hours on snow-related activities. 2,900 just to removal, over 400 on snow hauling. It's really an incredible, incredible number. If you looked at all the salt that we dropped, over 1,000 tons of salt, plus another 550 tons of our salt sand mix. So it's pretty, pretty impressive. We have five plow trucks that cover 63 miles of city streets and 20 feet, 25 miles of MDOT roads. So, MDOT reimburses us for managing US 131 and M55. We use two loaders and, and those loaders have to clear the whole area, especially in our downtown parking lots. And the newest truck in the fleet was, was acquired in 2016. These are just some stats regarding forestry activities. As you could see again, you know, with the same crew of people that are the same crew that do the, you know, do the, the patching and do the snow plowing, you know, they also do forestry activities as well. And so, it's thousands of hours that are spent doing a multitude of activities every year. And we're very proud to be able to do what we can with the resources that we have. As we talked about before, we only have, you know, about 70, 75 people working for the, working for the organization. Any presentation wouldn't be complete unless we talk about utilities. As you'll see a little bit later on in tonight's agenda, we're asking to acquire several pieces of utility activities. So we tested last year over 16,000 samples. That brought in nearly $100,000 in revenue. And in the picture below, you could see is our laboratory supervisor conducting some microscope, microscope work. We have less than 10 breaks, water main breaks this past year, but any break is always a difficult thing to, to work on. Typically, when you find a break, it's because you see water popping through the ground. And of course, they usually occur on cold and dark nights. But sort of like the postal service, we'll be out there rain, rain or snow. So, day or night, we'll be, we'll be responding to them. This is, oops, this is just a slide showing a meter being replaced. We did about 60 of these last year, along with a couple of hundred reader, meter reader units as well. And again, you'll be able to zoom in on our website if you're interested. The other thing of interest is the splash pad. The utilities department, especially given their specific expertise in managing pumps and valves, I turned over the keys, if you will, of the splash pad on the plaza to the, to the utilities department to manage. And so, there's a couple of images of the, of the pad at night, which we thought were pretty to look at. And of course, there's the ice tree. And so, there's a sort of before and after. We, we had the thaw and then we had the big freeze, and now I think we're going back to the, back to the thaw phase again where it's, where it's skinny and not, and not very thick. The Saw Grant, this is the, I think, largest grant the city's ever received where there's no local match, storm water and wastewater asset management. We received a million dollar grant from the state of Michigan.
Two million.
Two million, thank you. Two million dollar grant from the state of Michigan for this program. We've done 60,000 feet of sewer main cleaning and televising is a part of this already. And then just talking a little bit about utility infrastructure in general, water main construction, here's a tie-in at Blodgett and East Division that we've done. This is what it looks like under the ground. We thought it would be interesting to show. Railroad lift station, new pumps that we replaced. This is, or that was a picture, if you can see it, of the pumps coming in. And the new pumps are twice as large as the old pumps. Wellfield relocation phase two, this is a project that you may not hear about a lot, but it is well underway. We have C2AE basically on retention with the city. We're looking at using USDA rural development for our financing sources. We expect this to be finalized hopefully in spring of 2019. And here are some additional details that talk about the four additional wells. Employment, just another snapshot of our organization. According to this chart, we have about 71 full-time people. The breakout by administration or non-union, our police command union, our police officers' union, our firefighters' union, and our public works and utilities department union. And so, it's just food for thought to see the breakout. Average compensation by those employees that are Public Act 345, so that would be our police and fire versus those that are MERS, that would be our non-union and our steel worker union. So there is, there is some discrepancy between that. You'll see the public safety employees on average earn right around 62,000 and the non-union and the steel workers earn approximately 43,000. And of course, the pension average is also similarly different as well, where it is about 23,000 for Public Act 345 a year and right around 12 and a half thousand a year for the non-union and the public works and utilities employees. Some miscellaneous data, again, just another way of showing it. Average age of the employee in the organization is 44. Average tenure is just under 11 years. And over the last year, we promoted five people. Employee distribution, 20% female, 80% male, 69% are union, and 31% are non-union. Our turnover, annual turnover last year was 15.5%, 7% through retirement, 8.5% through resignations or other separation. And then here is a slide that shows what those And then here is a slide that shows what those resignations and separations were through, either through retirements or through separations by position, just again, for reference purposes. Last but not least, fiscal health and looking ahead. The annual award, we have received 32 years in a row, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We are incredibly proud to be able to announce that. Additionally, the Certificate for Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our CAFR, we've also received 32 years in the running. I don't recall the number offhand, but we are only a handful of communities nationwide that can tout that statistic. And here's just a clip about that, about how awards are an indication of the City of Cadillac's longstanding commitment to excellence in developing thorough and understandable financial documents. And I do believe that if you look, you know, on our website and look at our financial reporting and our transparency reporting and our various benchmarks and tracking, that it's really all done in a very user-friendly manner and very assessable. Outside funding, we are very happy to be able to say that the average over the last eight years is the use of approximately $750,000, or we have received approximately $750,000 through grants, donations, loan forgiveness, et cetera. It's a heck of a number to throw out there. Some years are higher than other years. Certainly, the $2 million SAW grant has helped with that number, but we are absolutely doing what we can to try to solicit new outside funding whenever possible. And as we discussed as a board earlier this evening, we're going to obviously continue to do that. General fund reserves, there's a lot of numbers on this slide, but the last two I wanted to really just point out. We're in a very good financial position. We have nearly 16% fund balance of unassigned funds, which is a good place to be. The GFOA has commonly remarked that you should have a month or two of fund balance on the books. That gets us there. When we look at both unassigned and assigned fund balance, we're over 30%, nearing 40%. But looking at just simply unassigned fund balance and being at nearly 16% is a nice position to be in. Unfunded liabilities, this is with respect to other post-employment benefits, or OPEB for short. There's an MSU extension report that we have, and let me see here, hopefully I didn't lose my note because I was touching my tablet, that shows that essentially statewide, and I might get this number wrong, but communities are around 14%. Oh, and is it real?
That was the number in the study.
Okay, that was the number in the study, around 14%, whereas the city under OPEB is around 70%. So we are well ahead of the curve and well within the top third of that benchmark, and so it's a good, again, a good place to be. And then finally, just looking ahead, there are many more items, other than the bullets, that are on the screen here, and I know that you'd love to hear more of me this evening, and I could go on and on and on, but just thinking about some of the largest things that we have in front of us, looking ahead in this year and in future years. Cadillac Commons completion. Cadillac West corridor improvements, as we talked about. Downtown redevelopment, and all the wonderful things that are going on there. Eastside development, the property along, you know, M55 and 131. Something eventually is going to happen there. Hopefully, the city is going to be a partner to that development activity. Medical marijuana, it's here. The state has recently, at the end of the calendar year, implemented its program. The city council is going to learn a little bit about what the state has now learned about this implementation at the upcoming Capitol Conference this March. And, you know, subsequent to getting some of that empirical information, I do believe we're going to have the conversation here, talking about how we would like to look at that. Do we want to allow it? Do we want to allow both dispensaries and, you know, industrial warehousing and grow operations? Do we want to allow only part of that? And if the answer to any of those, you know, hypothetical questions is yes, then once we have that conversation at this level, then we essentially punt it to the Planning Commission for them to go through the discussion as to, okay, where within our community should this use best be allowed, before it then comes back to city council ultimately for ratification through an ordinance process. So, excuse me. There are a lot of things that are out there in addition to what I just mentioned, but perhaps those are some of the biggest ones, and more or less the more immediate ones that I think this board is going to be facing. So with that, I certainly hope that you've appreciated my long-winded State of the City address, and I do appreciate your patience for that. But we are a full-service city. We do offer a lot of different things with the very limited numbers of people that we have and resources that we have, but we're proud to do them, we're all happy to do them, and we recognize that our, you know, commitment to this board and to this community is why we're all in this position to begin with, which is to serve the public. So with that, I'm going to retain my seat, and again, this report will be available online for future use, and you can always stream it as well and watch it again, so thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
So moving on, we have a slew of utilities-related items in front of us. These are all, as I would like to call them, housekeeping-type items. It's for purchase of supplies and equipment that we do on a somewhat routine basis. The first one is with respect to bids for biosolids injection for our environmental quality Class A biosolids. We had four bids that were submitted. Our recommendation is to go with Midwest injection. They are the lowest bid. The estimated cost on an annual basis, which is based on volume, is approximately $66,000.
I would go ahead and, if there's no discussion, and make a motion.
No, just to comment, again, I'm so disappointed that we can't use a Michigan company, and with the amount so miniscule between them, like one one-thousandth of a penny or something of one, but I know it's based on volume.
Who are we currently with?
Biotech Agronomics.
That was the second lowest bid.
Okay. Okay. Steve?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to award the contract for biosolids injection from the date of the award through December 31, 2020, to Midwest injection in accordance with their bid.
Support.
Councillor Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. The very next item is with respect to the acquisition of a final effluent water pump. We do have a $20,000 appropriation for the purchase of a FEW water pump for wastewater treatment operations. This replaces our current pump. The recommendation this evening is to go with Detroit Pump in an amount of $9,850, and funds are available in the water and sewer fund accordingly.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of a, is that right? Where am I? Am I in the right place?
Top page.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to award the purchase of a final effluent water or fuel pump to Detroit Pump in the amount of $9,850.
Support. Councillor King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item is with respect to the Equalization Basin Repair, or EQ, repair. This is a tank, yeah, this is a tank that currently is operating. However, we do want to move forward with extending its useful life and get it maintained. We have an appropriation of $25,000 to do this. We did receive one bid after bids were put out from the city, and the bid came in from Jurese Construction in an amount of $25,710. Even though that's over by 710 from what was appropriated, we do have the funds available in our water and sewer fund to move forward, and that is the recommendation this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the EQ basin repair project to Jurese Construction in the amount of $25,710.
Support.
So I just have a question. What does, what is the cost to replace one of these?
Oh, I hazard a guess of 1.5 million or so.
Okay.
So it's literally, most of it's buried underground, and what we are repairing is what you can see above ground, and just blocks and mortar that's falling apart, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councillor Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item is a request to purchase a muffin monster cutter stack. I really don't know what this is, and that's why we have a utilities director here who can very quickly explain what this is. But we did receive, again, just a single bid after putting out a competitive bid pack. The bid came in at $9,543. We did have $25,000 appropriated for this purchase, and the recommendation is to move forward with JWC Environmental out of Santa Ana, California accordingly. Obviously, this is a grinder unit, and this is a unit that operates at the wastewater plant. Jeff, is there any more that you'd like to explain as to what this does?
It's in the digester, and it's actually, like you said, a grinder unit, and it's the difference between a channel monster and a muffin monster is the muffin monster's in a pipe. So it's all enclosed, and as the liquid flows over it, it shreds everything that comes up into it, so.
The chunky liquid.
I would love to make a motion.
I want to too.
I gotcha. To award the purchase of a muffin monster cutter stack grinder to JWC Environmental in the amount of $9,543.
Support. Councillor Bowman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Councillor Bowman.
Do I get to do the sludge pump?
You can do the sludge pump. So the next item is with respect to the return activated sludge pump, or the RAS pump. The recommendation this evening, after bids were put out, is to work with Hydrodynamics out of Waterford, Michigan, and to provide them with the contract for $9,980. We did appropriate $11,000 accordingly for this acquisition. Funds, again, are available in our water and sewer fund, and Jeff, why don't you just again briefly mention what this device does?
A return activated sludge pump is a pump that takes the liquid water from our secondary clarifiers and returns a portion of it to the aeration tanks to reseed. The aeration tank is our biological process, and then it also gets rid of some of it over to our primary tanks, where it'll go into the digester, and it'll actually go through the muffin monster then, so.
I got it.
As a quick aside, we have been talking about having an open house sometime this coming year, maybe spring or summer or fall while the weather is still nice, for the community to come out, and certainly members of council, and take a tour of the facility and see some of these things in action, so.
Coffee at Muffin Day?
Yes. Yeah, one at Muffin.
I would strongly recommend attending that. It's, I took my family with my little grandson, who was quite interested, but all the kids, and we all went out there, and it was just the most amazing, eye-opening, nostril-closing experience. But it was fabulous to see the science that goes into maintaining the water and cleaning it and putting it back, so.
We talked about taking the youth council out there, too.
We're totally going to do that.
I'll make a motion to award the purchase of a return activated sludge pump by the manufacturer ABBA, which is really cool, to Hydrodynamics in the amount of $9,980.
Support.
Councillor Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
The final item that is with respect to a wastewater component is for the acquisition of a new digester circulator pump replacement. Again, the recommended vendor is Hydrodynamics in the amount of $10,612. The appropriation was $15,000. Funds are available in the water and sewer fund for this, and Jeff?
This takes product out of the digester, runs, pumps it, circulates it through the boiler where it heats up, and then it returns it back to the digester, where the little critters in there can make methane gas and water and some other stuff in there that we use. So it digests, it helps digest the biosolids.
So fascinating. I'll make a motion to award the purchase of a digester circulator pump to Hydrodynamics in the amount of $10,612.
Support. Councillor King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, members of the city council. The next item is a whole change of area. We're looking at the adoption of a hardship or poverty exemption policy. State Public Act 390 states that the governing body of the local assessing unit shall determine and make available to the public the policy and guidelines the local assessing unit uses for granting hardship or poverty exemptions. Furthermore, the statute requires that local units have to annually adopt, so we'll be back, a policy, including an asset test used to approve or deny the various exemptions. The City of Cadillac has adopted and incorporated the federal poverty guidelines established by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, and the revision to our existing policy establishes the 2018 Health and Human Services Policy Guidelines. The Board of Review does use these guidelines when a hardship or poverty exemption application comes before them, and your packet includes a copy of that full policy for any further review that you may have. But it is recommended this evening that the city council approve the updated hardship exemption policy utilizing the 2018 Health and Human Services Poverty Guidelines.
Make a motion to approve the updated hardship poverty exemption policy utilizing the 2018 Health and Human Services Poverty Guidelines.
Support.
Councillor Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council.